Make sure we've got all of our board members. Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Todd, are you sick in your pickup trucks?
Yes, I am.
You're gonna use it like a wifi.
Yeah, it's alright.
You're stealing it from the co-op. I'm FS, I mean.
That's right. That's right.
I mean data, sorry.
It's the quietest place around right now.
Yeah, it's close as.
Okay, I'll keep checking the waiting room here periodically. Yeah, we do have several staff members and some others. I guess before we can get into that, maybe I know we've got a quorum here, so we want to go ahead and get the meeting started.
Good morning.
Yep. Is that Lynn or Kristen that are here?
Lynn.
Lynn, morning. Okay, we'll do a roll call.
Yeah, as I say, I know we've got quite a few viewing, so for right now, even for staff members, if you could make sure that you are muted if you're not one of the board members at this time, we'll probably be asking for some input later from you.
Okay, LJ, are you present?
I am present.
Todd?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
Lynn?
Present.
Adam, are you on? Mindy?
Present.
Alright. Okay, uh, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I still move.
I'll second.
Hey, Lynn moves, LJ second. All in favor?
Yeah.
Hi.
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 Alright. Okay, let's talk about these two auctions here.
Okay, yep, and I'll start off maybe to begin with and then probably turn it over to Kristen and she may open up to some of her staff as well, but maybe be after maybe the two of us talk a little, it'd be good for maybe the board to deliberate a little, maybe do some question answer and so on, so. Yeah, so to back up a little bit, you know, shortly after the extended closure, when we got more guidance on what types of learning the state considered, you know, they basically had three considerations, one where you really weren't doing anything to engage students, and then the two continuous learning models, and those are continuous learning voluntary, which is basically what we're doing now, and continuous learning required. It's kind of a moving target as far as who is doing what, because you can change it at any time during the process, so, you know, last time I took a look at, there's an AEA spreadsheet that has districts doing that, you know, I would, the vast majority as of today have still indicated that they're doing voluntary continuous learning. There are several doing required, but generally only at the upper grade levels. Those that are doing required, most of them are doing it just at the high school, a couple of them are doing it at the junior high level. I don't think any are AEA are doing it at the elementary, but I'm a hundred percent sure on that. And then there are several now that, now that the closure has officially been extended through, you know, the end of the school year, there are other districts that are, that either have gone from continuous to required or are considering that in the near future, so, again, I don't know the exact number on that, I know some of you have, know some of your cohorts in the conference even. Well, Gladbrook, Reinbeck is required now at least at high school level, Union is going that way now, Dyke, New Hartford is going that way for high school, others are at least considering it. Some of the reasons why a lot of districts are at least considering going to the required route for upper grades now, deal with a variety of things, and teachers can talk this some too, but the amount of engagement, I think most teachers would say is probably tailed off somewhat over the last several weeks. You may have more kids involved in the Zoom sessions and things like that as far as trying to do projects, other work, I think most teachers are seeing a decline in that. With the voluntary, another piece deals with the equity part of it, we are able to, at least on a limited basis, to be able to supply hotspots, they've been kind of short supply, but visiting with folks from US Cellular and one of their warehouses for these is in Iowa, and the person that I visited was said that, you know, if we do an order, they think they can get us set up with either hotspots or wireless routers that would do in essence the same thing, be able to be used as a hotspot, and she said that they could overnight deliver those to us at no charge, so. Being in Iowa, she was willing to try and accommodate us and work with us, so I think we could get those relatively quickly, and then there, you know, there'd be some time to get those out to families that might not have internet. I can't tell you that that's 100% going to work, because there may be some reasons that it just doesn't work in some areas, and that may require some paper packet or textbook type learning, but I also don't want to necessarily discount, there are a lot of students, or a lot of schools that are, that are doing the required, that are doing some kind of a hybrid, it doesn't necessarily just have to be internet, so. We've got more guidance from the state as far as special education and IEPs that, you know, we can, you know, as long as we're doing our best to meet those students' IEPs, there may need to be some amendments based off, you know, doing work from home, but, you know, that's not stopping districts from doing it, and there are, except there are a fair number of schools, schools that are already going the required route. And one of the other big ones, I know that teachers might touch base on, is we have had some, I guess you'd say, some kind of mixed messages in the past from the state as far as any competency or standards-based program, what you can do, because right now the state is saying officially that we shouldn't be doing, you know, if a student missed days prior to the closure, and I know I give the board an example of my own son who was gone for asthma checkup and missed a few days before school closed, and didn't get some of his, you know, work and assessments done. Technically, those aren't supposed to be allowed to be done until school is back in session, and if you do the required route, the state considers school to be in session. Teachers have also communicated out about reassessments in a standards-based program, what that might look like, you know, since they've been doing that, you know, since the beginning of the year, but at least with this semester, for these semester grades, I know for a lot of teachers that kind of leaves them in limbo of how they've communicated out to students what they can or can't reassess and how that process works. And the state's basically saying, you know, technically unless you're back to required, you shouldn't be doing those things. I say that with the caveat now that there was a Zoom yesterday where there may be guidance, at least from that piece, I think the state might be changing their tune on that, there's talk that next Tuesday, yes, I know, I see Kristen kind of smile, yes. There are a lot of administrators who have given the state feedback as far as why it's not very practical to not be able to work with some of our students, even if we're doing voluntary learning on things, grades and credits. I think they've gotten that message and they may be changing their tune on that portion, what we're hearing is there may be something coming officially on that next Tuesday. You know, so for example, you would, under a voluntary continuous learning, be able to do some of these things and offer credit to students for work prior to the closure, or, you know, if they are, if they were gone, or if they're reassessing, but I don't know exactly what that's gonna look like, so I'm just saying that's what we're hearing, but we don't have anything official on that, so. That is one piece, because the other piece of it too, besides just considering that, is, you know, the amount of learning in the fourth quarter that probably would be happening, and if we do something required, I think at least a lot of the teachers have some key concepts that, from their course, we know it wouldn't look the same as it would if we were, you know, back in school, but at least some of the key concepts, key learning that they may want students to do, so. As I rambled on quite a bit, I'll turn it over to Kristen for now and let her kind of share some of her thoughts before we maybe involve the high school staff and questions from board members.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Um, as Mr. Petty said, when they came out with the voluntary and required, we really looked long and hard at it, and we, they talked a lot about competency-based education, and because we are not a traditional grading system, we are a standards reference system, we kind of plugged ourselves into that competency-based system, and, you know, because we're standards reference, our grades are fluid from the beginning of the semester until the end, and so for us to say on March 16th, sorry, kids, that's your grade, that's just, it goes against, it goes against our grading practices, it's just not how we work, and so we kind of interwove the opportunity to reassess and for someone like Mr. Petty's son to retake his test that he missed, because that's ultimately what's best for our kids, and that's, that's really our goal, we want to make sure that we are doing what's best for our kids. And the best way that we can assure that every kid has the opportunity to raise their grade and be the grade that they want is at this point to go required, and we're not talking kids that are failing that want to pass, we're talking kids that have a B minus, that don't want a B minus, they, they are an A student, they had that one test that they maybe got a three on, they want to be able to reassess that to get that to the four, so we want to provide that opportunity. You know, school inconsistency right now should be their focus, we have a lot of kids that are working full-time, and, you know, we, this is still school, this is still school time, and we want our kids to be focusing on, you know, what they should be when they're 15, 16 years old, and so if we can maybe provide them the opportunity and hopefully maybe open that back up to them to say to their work, I can't work Monday, Wednesday, Friday from 8:30, 12:30 because I have school, because right now it is a little fluid for them. Obviously, as Ben said, the DE said, no, we can't reassess, we can't allow it in the voluntary, and so we just feel it's the best thing for our kids. As Mr. Petty said, we have a lot of kids who are preparing for their next stage, whether it's college, whether it's algebra two, whether it's chemistry, there's a lot of information in fourth quarter that we really do need to get our kids, and we really want to make sure that they, that they get, and, you know, our attendance has actually been pretty good, especially in these last couple of weeks. You know, we still have kids that aren't coming, and we have reached out to each of them directly, and in all of my contacts with parents, I've only had three tell me they have zero connectivity to the internet. I have had some that say it's spotty, I have some that say they struggle a little bit with it, but we can be fluid as to when kids are on, they don't need to be on at the exact same time as parents, if that's, that's an issue, but I've only had three that say they have no internet at all. And prior to leaving, because we kind of had that standards reference, we had about 60 failures, and, you know, standards reference rating, we need to give them that opportunity, that it's what we are and it's who we are, that, that we just don't accept that. And like I said, it's not about the Fs, it's about every kid from A to D that wants to raise that grade, and that's kind of where we're at, when we did the survey early on, that wasn't when we were extending our learning to the end of the year, but most parents in that survey, you know, said whatever works, whatever works for their kids, right? I think quite a few parents actually think we're required right now, because, you know, when I'll email them, they're like, I'll get them on, you know, I think many of them just think that we're required anyway, so some of them I don't even think, they'll be like, oh, wait, I thought we were, so. You know, I just think at the end of the day, our goal at the high school is to do what's best for kids, and we thought voluntary was really the best way to go, but now that we can't allow them to reassess, and we can't allow them to take those tests that we missed, we really don't think that that's the right thing to do. The three people that going required will affect the most are actually my three special ed teachers, because for the rest of us, we really can go on, I mean, yes, you have to create your assessments, but Ms. Heingartner, Mr. Silver, and Mr. Reichs, they do need to reach out to all of their special education students, I was able to sit down with the West Marshall, Marshall principal this week, and I kind of got all of kids' stuff. They have to make a change to the I page, it's a kind of a document that they can just fill in with the kid, they have to get written notice from the parents, and then in the fall, we just basically have to take that I page out. Jody went through it once, and Lynn went through it once, said it took about 15 minutes, so, you know, that's something that they're going to need to do, but all three are on board with doing that and getting those connections, the minutes that they have to interact, the progress monitoring, that stuff has been waived, so that does look different for them, it's just this documentation that they need to document that essentially is saying that their learning is going online, and that they will connect with them to, to help them with their work. Our parents have been awesome, they've actually been going to classes this whole time, they've been working with kids, they've been pulling them out and working with them here and now, so I think that's something that we can continue to do, and that can happen pretty seamlessly as well. I think I kept for all of my staff, I'd love for them to comment as well, or if the board members have any questions.
Yeah, and that's what I thought too, I thought maybe the good time to open it up to school board members for questions, and then I think what I would like to do is maybe even, this is kind of new for all of us doing Zooms, especially when we get this large, but I guess what I'd like to do is let our board members also hear from the staff, you know, more of the boots-on-the-ground kind of thing, working with these kids day to day and getting some of their perspective too, so maybe they can help with answering some of those questions, I guess maybe, let's try opening it up to the board members first to see what questions you might have over some of these concepts we've talked about so far, or clarification, or if you just want to hear from a teacher, hey, how is this working in X subject area, for example?
Kristen, I have a question.
Yeah.
One of the last board meetings we had, we actually had a report of pretty low attendance on online learning, and now we have increased attendance and you're gonna have rave reviews about it, what's made the increase in attendance? Is it reaching out to the families or just people awareness?
Reaching out, one, and two, if you remember when we set up our voluntary, we set up to, able to reassess, you needed to attend a certain percentage of the time. And so students are on because they believe they could reassess, and then obviously the Department of Education said we couldn't do that, so. Also, we reached out to athletes because quite a few of them had Fs on March 16th, and so that would mean that they would be ineligible come softball, come baseball, come football, come cross country, and so for them, I think that was that realization, like, whoa, wait, this F isn't going away. You know, and so I think those three caveats are kind of why our attendance has either maintained or increased because of what we've done in those aspects.
So, I get the reassessment part, you know, because we have talked about that before, we thought we were gonna be able to do that on the voluntary basis, so I, I understand, you know, all the teachers set out some criteria that the kids were gonna have to do to be able to reassess what they had done previously, correct?
Correct.
So, I follow that, now, what about moving forward if we're going to required, and I assume now we're gonna start grading assignments and activities and new things we're doing, you know, for the next four weeks or five weeks, whatever it is, so what's that gonna look like, I guess, you know, with the idea of doing what's best for kids, you know, it's gonna be a challenge. You know, we're getting used to online learning, but it's still not perfect, I guess, I'm just wondering, have teachers talked about how assessment might go, or what they're gonna look at when they're assessing? Is it gonna change in the classroom?
Well, it would, and, you know, assessments have to change, right? We couldn't do a paper and pencil test because they could just go on and look at the answers, you know, so it's, that piece is gonna look different, what we kind of talked about yesterday is maybe picking, you know, you're learning the new information, but maybe picking one additional standard to assess over in the next four weeks, so. Like Ms. Heingartner has kind of been doing a running project, now if someone has, comes in that hasn't done any of that, you know, they'll, they'll need to do that work, but our goal isn't to inundate them with work, our, our goal is really truly to open up that grade book so we can allow the assessments and those, that makeup work. We don't want to inundate them with work, we don't want to inundate them with a thousand assignments, we really, we want to provide them grace, so, I mean, that's kind of our goal, is within that four-week time to maybe assess on one standard, which really isn't, you know, for, and, and it's going to look different, like for Mrs. Hammers in food management, you know, they, they may need to prepare a meal for their family and kind of record it from beginning to end, well, they're not gonna do that during class time, right? They're gonna do that in an evening setting, you know, for Ms. Latham, it might be something where they're going outside and they're testing soil samples or something, but just to kind of get their, their hands into it, and that's what our teachers are missing in the classroom, right? We don't get to do all of those things, so, you know, teachers are gonna have to be creative in what that looks like, they can't just give out that class that they used to give because we have no, we can't watch them take it, essentially we can't, but we can't, you know, you have your phone right next to you and you're looking things up, and, you know, so it's just, we're, teachers will need to get creative, but our goal is to not inundate them with homework, our goal is to not inundate them with assessments. Excuse me, it's really just to provide them that opportunity to reassess and make up those tests and work that they didn't get advanced to finish, and even like, like Ms. Frost, they were working, they were in the middle of a project, I believe, in one of the classes, and so they didn't finish it, so it's not great, so it's like just that opportunity to finish that project so they can grade that project. Did that answer your question, Brian?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
So I have a question, for the seniors, they would only have like two, two and a half weeks left before they were out anyway, do we leave them voluntary, or do we make them required if we go required?
The only, we did talk about that because we'd like to give them a little, you know, they've had a crap year, but we've got some seniors that are failing a couple of classes that I think would want it to be required, so that, because if they fail, they don't get to graduate, and we can't just pick and choose which students. So if we started on May 1st, they would really only have four, six days of class, so the seniors would look a little different, but we would be able to allow them to reassess, and I think theirs would look a little different, and we'd provide them a lot more grace, but I think for them, really just that opportunity, you know, like Mrs. Hammers has one, like, if she could just get that reassessment in, she's probably not gonna fail and she's gonna be good, and we've just got a couple of boys that just need to turn in a paper and they're good, and so I think we'd want to require them, but it'll look a little different, not on paper, but for our teachers, if that makes sense, Todd.
And it's a mix, if you look at, when I go to this AEA spreadsheet, or just in talking with some of my other folks in the conference, it's kind of a mix as far as what schools are doing, is whether, those that are going to required, some are going 9/11, some are going 9/12, yeah, but I think those that are going 9/12 are still, yeah, it still looks a little different for the seniors than it would for, for the rest of your students. I'm interested, since I did bring in a lot of the staff and said, you know, I don't want you to just listen because board members hear from myself and Kristen plenty, but I think it'd be good for, if some of our staff members want to talk a little bit about kind of your perspective on, you know, the two types of, I guess, you know, if we consider going from voluntary to required, if that's something you're in favor of and why, and, you know, kind of what it means for your class and some of your students.
Hey, Ben, before we do that, you mentioned you talked to some of the area schools, you know, we know GR and, and Dyke have done this. You know, as far as, I know there's, you know, there's still the concerns about going to required, you know, availability, so what have you heard from those superintendents or teachers or principals as far as students and families being able to get on? I talked to a school board member, it seems like it's going okay.
Yeah, at GR, I spoke with their superintendent, and he said it's, it's actually going better than they expected, although part of it is, I guess, the telecommunications in their towns, at least in the towns, I don't know what that meant for rural areas, but in the towns, did provide families with free internet through the month of May, and they also purchased several hotspots through US Cellular and got those out to the families that didn't have that, and so I, I don't know, I'm not gonna sit here and say that they are 100% connected, but I think if not, they're pretty close to it there.
And West, the West Marshall principal said it's going pretty well, Dyke is actually starting their required on May 1st, so they started voluntary and they have since changed to required, and I think a couple others are as well, Jessup maybe, and
Yeah, Unions.
Yeah, I think, are volunteering like us now and are making that transition because it just, you know, I think a lot of us went in with that caveat that we would be able to do some of that back stuff, and we've kind of gotten told that we can't, and so in order to kind of, like I said, do what's best for kids, a lot of us are going, well, we have to go required then, so, Dyke, WAPC, Jessup, I think they are going to go required. West Marshall and GR might have been the only two that started required, if I remember right, in the NICL.
I think so.
So, so if we change from voluntary to required, that allows all the students to go back to anything previous and reassess, or is it teacher chosen, kid chosen? You know, what, what exactly does that look like, and then that also opens up future, a future reassessments or grading to help them as well?
Yeah, and I think generally the teachers have some restrictions or guidelines as far as, you know, attendance or work that students need to do in order to reassess, but maybe that'd be a good time for one of our staff members to chime in, so.
And we do.
Raise your hand, unmute yourself.
Most, most, most teachers do, however, we have decided kind of collectively that, because we're in the middle of a pandemic, that we do want to offer some grace, so usually it's a two-week window that students can reassess. So during this time period, because, let's say normally in a semester time period, you're gonna have eight assessments, well, they've only had two, so, I'm not real good at math, so Sue can hop in, but, you know, if you bomb one of those two, you know, you can't, but if you have eight and you don't do well on one, you have more of a time period, so we want to be able to allow them to actually reassess on all, not, we decided universally that we would reopen assessments, I don't think that's going to change for next year, because we will go back, this is a pandemic, we, we are changing, we're not gonna teach on Zoom next year either, we'll, we'll go back to those standards that we have, that you have a two-week window, you have to complete A, B, and C in order to reassess, and so for this window, we, we will allow reassessments from the beginning, but they still have to complete A, B, and C, so the assessments are all will be open, but each teacher, as they do now, will decide what they need to do to reassess, does that make sense, Minnie?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I guess my only thing is, I would like to hear if anybody has any reason not to go to the required system. First, before we hear a bunch more, yes, we do, yes, we do, is there any reason that we should not, otherwise from staff or administration?
Yeah, and I guess I'll chime in too, and again, I don't want to keep talking, I don't want a lot of staff members, because I think a lot of us are kind of conflicted on it to a degree, and we talked about this some at the high school staff meeting, because, you know, some of the unknowns is, you know, we really don't know how we don't necessarily know the anxiety level, some of the mental health issues that some students may be dealing with that might complicate doing this, and that's, and, you know, we don't want to minimize that. A part of me is hopeful that at least the initial shock of all of this has kind of started to wear off a little bit, but again, that's kind of anecdotal, and we probably don't know for sure until we get into it, but yeah, I'll certainly open up to any of the staff members that want to, want to speak to that. Or your thoughts on voluntary versus required?
Well, I don't hear them saying that they, they don't think it's a good idea.
Yeah, we're certainly willing to listen to all, all angles, so, come on, teachers, somebody chime in.
I'll talk.
Okay.
I think the staff is in agreement that this is something we need to do, but we also understand that we do need to give them grace, and we're not gonna be trying to shove our entire curriculum down their throats in four weeks, you know, there's very, we all just have to understand what is the most important thing that I can try to get to these students yet this year, especially for courses like mine that build on each other, what, what do I really want to make sure that my students see and hear from me this year, so, I think we can all just rest easy, we're all professionals in this, and we do care about the kids, and we want to build relationships, not burn them down, so, we're not trying to be the mean, awful teachers that are going to destroy their lives, you know, we're just trying to do what's best for everybody, and that's the kids, that's the teachers, and we are cognizant that there might be stuff going on in their homes that are going to stress them out, and we hope that they'll just reach out to us and communicate with us if they're facing some difficulties and we can work with them, so.
Well, I think as far as my feelings on it, we've heard all the positives about it, and nobody's said any negatives, and if we're gonna have to do this to get our kids to pass their classes, I move that we go to it. If that's what we're looking for, it's a motion.
I guess I, maybe before we do that, I do want to let other teachers chime in if they have other things to say, because I want their, their voices certainly to be heard here, so, are there others?
I, I just agree with what Mrs. Callas said and what Mrs. Rungy said, we've got the same concerns, but you're right, LJ, this is, this is what we have to do. this is what we have to do to let the kids reassess to get where they need to be. This is, this is the, the least amount of harm. And if we would have known we couldn't have reassessed from the DE, when we talked the first time about going voluntary, we would have pushed required from the start. Because we would have known that that's the only way they could have reassessed. But we, we thought we were okay of making it work for us and we can't. So that's why our tune has changed, but.
Again, I was waiting to speak until some other staff members spoke.
My start with, you know, my first concern was special ed. But most of the special ed are attending, that I work with are attending classes with me when I'm in there. And I've been able to reach out with them and work with them. So it'd just be that continual, you know, working with them online. Yes, the paperwork would be something the three teachers would have to do. But I think what's best is to open that back up. So even those special ed kids could, you know, again, standard basis to be able to master the standard and be able to, most of my kids are going to go on to the next level, the next class, they got to have the skills to be able to do that. So I think the best thing is to open it up so that they have the opportunities, not bombard them, but also give them, you know, at least some knowledge to be able to transfer into their next classes or, or to be able to make up that work that they missed prior to.
I definitely have students that need to make up work. And would be getting As or Bs if they had that opportunity. Uh, they've, in the past have always shown that they've gotten their work in and it'd be good quality. And we're talking some students Cs and below, um, which is out of character for quite a few of the students that I'm thinking about. Maybe this is the cart before the horse, but I wonder if we, uh, need to consider, maybe it's going to be done anyway, some kind of verification of receipt of an email or by Google form or something that parents can sign up for, whether they want packets or online. So there's no ambiguity on that.
Good idea.
And I mean, what does the timeline look like, um, that's being recommended also? Because I know we were going to do the May term. So is it going, I mean, would it go through that or, um, it just seems like, uh, we did do a great job of jumping on, online and getting it going right when schools got out where I feel like a lot of the other schools that first two weeks really do anything. So we were ahead of the game. So are we, you know, going to waive the, the May term part or will it continue through there? Or what's your, what are you guys thinking?
Yeah. I mean, we won't be able to do May term unfortunately, just because most of it involves going on field trips and, and being together. And so unfortunately, May term won't happen. So basically kind of our vision is, you know, to start on the first, um, the last day of school is the twenty eighth was technically is a Thursday, um, which is not a school, you know, because we're doing Monday, Wednesday, Friday, where Tuesday, Thursdays are work days. Um, and so basically essentially from the first, um, you know, the twenty eighth, students will have class. They'll have that opportunity to reassess. And then they'll have that opportunity to take that one assessment during that time period. And unless, you know, the end of the school is, end of the school is waived, that's our plan is to basically kind of work until the twenty seventh, essentially. And then if anybody else needs, that twenty eighth would be provided to them, which is technically the last day of school, but we're just not in session with our Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So um, I, I mean, I think it would just continue, continue as is. We wouldn't change the schedule. The Thursdays would be time to work and to reassess and to take tests that they hadn't taken yet. Any other teachers want to hop in? Asher have something to say? He good?
I guess if nobody else has anything to say, my motion still stands.
Hey, LJ.
They're just leaving time.
So that, that was a motion to move to required continuous learning in May.
This is correct. And, uh, I guess my only other question is, are we stopping at the normal stop date of our school year end date?
Yeah, yep. So we would plan on, uh,
I don't know if I missed that or something.
Yeah, Kristen had made mention of that, but, but, uh, yep, through, almost through the month of May, through the end.
So, okay, perfect. Yep.
Okay. Well, we've got a motion to move to required learning. And before we ask for a second, I will say that at the beginning of this meeting, I was for voluntary. After hearing all the staff and board commentary, uh, you swayed my opinion. So with that being stated, is there a second to the motion to move to required learning?
I'll second the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. So LJ's got a motion. Brian's got a second. All in favor of going to required learning to finish out the year?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. Yeah, thank you very much.
Required learnings.
Teachers, thanks for joining us. Mr. Bartling even put a tie on for the occasion. That's pretty impressive.
He wears a tie every day during virtual learning, Mr. Petty.
I don't, maybe he just sleeps with it on and gets up like that.
I just wanted to say thank you so much to all of the teachers at V C L U W and the administration because I truly feel like we have set the standard and the bar high for every other school around. We jumped on online learning way before other school districts and our teachers have been working really, really hard. So I'm very proud of all of you.
And if I could chime in first, uh, just in interpreting this, because Mr. Boardman messaged me, we are, we are talking high school when we talk about required. And I know that's what you folks are, are referring to as well. So when we talk about, we are still going to continue to provide voluntary, continuous learning for elementary and middle school.
You get a little worried there, Mr. Boardman?
Good you clarified that.
Well, you know, you might have a few nervous, you know, first and second graders too, if you went home and said, okay. Although they might like it, you know, who knows?
I think it'd be the parents that might be a little more concerned just enough.
Yes, yes, I imagine.
It would be the, it would be the parents. Yes.
Okay. Board members, any final thoughts or are we done?
No. Well, while we're still online, I'd just like to say, just like Lynn and Mindy seconded, man, I, I just appreciate everything everybody's doing. There's been so much work put into this in such a short period of time. I mean, if you can't be proud of your district right now, I don't know when you can. So kudos to everyone and, and man.
I would agree. And thanks to the board members. I believe in, and looking back at my, uh, board website, this is our fourth April board meeting via Zoom now. So. Yeah. So, and who knows with what comes from the state. I'm not saying it won't be a fix. So, you know.
Yeah, we can't wait till you get an email last Tuesday with the new results.
Yeah, that's, well, really that, that shouldn't impact what we're doing if we're going to required anyway. So, um, but who knows what they'll throw us next. So, okay. Well, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, guys. Have a wonderful day. Thank you for your time. Thanks for your stuff. See you guys later. Bye, guys.